There we go. Can you all hear us now? Great. Okay. Oh, that's me. Sorry. Let's look at our. Okay. It is three oh three on September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, and I call this meeting of the Economic Opportunity Advisory Board to order. Let's go around. We just have, we have. Our guests from Serta with us, and we will get to you very shortly. We would have to do a couple like just introductions and approval of minutes from last month, and then we'll bring y'all up and yeah, have a conversation with you. So, yeah, let's, and also. And most of you know, I'm in like a sleep deprived state for the last month. We had a baby a couple of weeks ago, so. Very excited and bear with me if I, you know, can't think of words or, you know, do things wrong, just something else. Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, so let's just go around and start with introductions. I, Chris Wilson, Chair of the Board and Representative of the Private Sector, Grand County. Uh, maybe I shouldn't.
Actually, for a lot Western career cycling. He's Grant, uh. Private sector representative. Here it's contagious.
Uh, Melody McCann was Grand County Commission.
Brittany Melton, Board Member.
Yes, Chris Rogers, Board Member.
Uh, Randy Martin, Moab Area Chamber of Commerce.
Melissa Jockers, Grand County Staff.
Mark Tanner, County Director.
Horace Phillips, Director for Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, Todd Thompson with SBDC.
Nice. I've stood a contingent. You guys want to do introductions?
Sure. I'm Jerry Camper. I'm sort of on the section director.
I'm Julie Roger, Serta, and I'm the Community Engagement Director.
I'm Corinne Olson. I'm the Community Development Program Manager.
I'm Chris Allred. I'm the Housing Valorization Program Manager.
And I'm Jade Powell. I'm the Deputy Director at Serta.
Oh, good.
Happy to have you everyone. Yeah, thank you all for joining us today. Appreciate it. Uh, and online, Jasmine?
Jasmine Duncan, Member of the Board.
Aaron?
Aaron Lindberg, Member of Board for the Sector.
Thanks. Cory?
Everyone, Cory Shirtless, Community Development Director, City Moab.
Thanks Cory. And Deborah, last but not least.
Bringing up the rear, I'm Deborah McKee from the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. I'm the Outreach Manager for the area.
Thank you all for joining us. Really appreciate it. Um. All right, so moving right along, I think, are there any, um. Conflicts of interest, disclosures, expertise, communication that needs to be disclosed? Hearing none. Move along. Uh, any citizens to be heard? So, thanks. Uh. Don't think we have any, well, we have presentations that are on the agenda, additional. And so the next time of business would just be approval of the minutes from eight twenty seven, twenty twenty five. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve those minutes?
Thank you.
I should.
Yeah, I don't see.
Oh, they not get shared?
I thought we called. I thought I read them. I don't know.
Well, Erin may have shared them. Um.
They're in the agenda packet.
Are they in the agenda packet? Okay.
They're not. They're not on the, not on the public meeting website. Or I can't, or I'm not seeing them.
That's me there. I pulled it right out.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at it right now, too. I.
I don't see them.
Don't see them. Let's just postpone this item to next month, and we'll get back to the minutes. We'll make sure they're shared before then. Okay. Well, then with that, we're ready to have a conversation with everyone that joined us from Serta. Thank you all so much for coming to and joining us. Um, I think for folks around the room, most of you know. Uh, who Serta is in a general sense, but we'll learn a lot more about some of the details of the programs. It is something for those who have been on the board long enough. That we had some engagement with to help fund additional part of the revolving loan fund several years ago. So that's part of the engagement. We'll hear some about that today, I think. In addition to whatever else, I mean, I think we're really excited to learn about just opportunities for engagement. And you know how we can better take advantage of the, or regional, um, association. So, yeah, feel free to join the table or speak from back there, whatever y'all want, but I'll just sort of.
I just stay here.
Sure. Yeah, however you'd like.
So again, I'm Jerry Camper, and we're super excited to be here. We, um. We're a regional organization, you know, we're in Carmen, we grant in San Juan. There's seven AOGs in the state. Five rural, two urban. Um, we also have an economic development district where we're in partnership with the EDA, the Economic Development Administration. Um. We were created over fifty years ago, and that was to manage block grants. And there's not enough money in block grants. To go to every county and city, so they created these regional organizations. We, we look at ourselves, we don't. Um, we, you know, we have a board of eight members, so we have four commissioners, one from each county, and then four mayors, one from each counties. So, um, we look at our, um, how we can be helpful. Um, most of our small counties and small cities, um, we are. Who's are paid to aspire counties, and it's up for a total of about a hundred thousand, it is a hundred thousand dollars. And I'll break that down a little bit. Twenty thousand of it's for building maintenance. Um, we worked totally grant funded. You cannot use grant funding to pay for building maintenance. So we have twenty thousand that goes through the building maintenance. We have twenty thousand for IT. So for example, getting the new server and those kind of things, we pay every telecom to manage. And keep us secure and all that fun stuff. So we have that every year, and then Moab actually pays. Um, twenty-five hundred of that five thousand that the board agreed on back in two thousand fifteen or sixteen, something like that. And, um, then sixty thousand is used for administration. And it typically, some of it goes to me as a matching component. To EDA, we get a planning partnership that lasts three years. It's two hundred and ten thousand dollars for three years. And that money goes to match that because there has to be a match to give that money. So that's just to break down that hundred thousand. So no cities paying to the AOG or anything like that. So we went to Serta. Because Association of Governments was very confusing for people. They were like, what does an AOG do? So we created, um, when we had a new building, we thought this was a good time to rebrand, so that's why we went with Serta, so Southeastern Regional Development Agency. Um. With that, we view ourselves as an extension of your team because none of our counties and cities are. Funded well to have these huge teams like Urban, Utah, it's like. So we always just wait for, hey, give us direction when you would like us to be. Part of any kind of project you're doing, and we're happy to try to do whatever part of that project you want us to do. We consider you all our bosses, and you know how we can best help, and we're happy to do. Anything. We really, really want to help. We try to get creative. Our funding gets very specific. We tell them what we have to do. So mostly we don't have money for economic development. But we try to be really creative with our planning dollars. So we get planning dollars from ULCT. Um, that's Representative Christine Watkins right now, but it's going to be her. I mean, Christine is leaving, she'll be part-time at the agency. But, um, she's not going to be a full-time employee anymore. So we have, she'll be taking over that area, and that idea is to help any. Small cities. It has to be these small cities. The Moab is considered. A bigger city, price is considered that big, bigger city, but we're happy to help any way we can. But it's small cities that really that LA is. But we also get creative with any kind of economic development projects that we're asked to participate in, and we can, we can. We can TV, we can get in there and do that. Um, we have a planner from CIB. We have money from that. That funds, um, we have a part-time, um. He does ordinances and zoning. His name's Todd Thorne. He actually is full-time employed with Carmen County. And we used to have an employee, he went to, um, Pace and City. All he does is approve developments for Pace and City. I can't even imagine that's. That's all he does. He just doesn't, I'll be long. So we hired Todd, the county agreed, and he helps with our. Any planning or zoning. Right now he's helping San Juan County, he's helping Orangeville City and Elmo City. So any kind of projects that. Are in that realm, he helps. We also have planning dollars, um, from GOPB. So, uh. That's Governor's Office of Planning Budget. So that's how we can pull our planning dollars and put it all together. We have five employees. We have two part, three part-time, and then two full-time. So just, and then we have some grant money that comes in. That's to fund a full-time grant writer. Her name's Louisa. And I think a lot of people in Moab know, I think she has quite a few connections in this area. So anyway. Just to let you know, we have that on staff, and even though we don't have this funding that really pays for economic development, other than that little bit from EDA we get. We do try to, anytime we can get creative and help, we're happy to be. That extension of your team, any way you design it and want us to participate. So at that, I'll leave it there, and I'll, I'll let Corinne take over. She's our RLF, um, Community Development Manager, and I'll let her start.
So I'm Corinne. I, a couple of the programs I manage is, are the Revolving Loan Fund, and Grand County has a specific pot of money. Just for small businesses that want to start here in the county. Um, we have two successful ones that have been. Uh. Awarded and approved, so that's really exciting. Um. So yeah, I'm here to help, I hope, walk-in appointments over the Grand Center. Um, I try to get here about twice a month to do in-person meetings. So if you have any friends or colleagues that are looking for gap financing. Just get a small business started, and meet together. I can point them through the application process and, and start, and get that started. There is a cap of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Of the revolving loan fund, um, that you can apply for. So it's not huge, but it's enough to drip out the door and get things started. Um, another. Program I run is the Community Development Block Grant, which Moab City and Grand County has both applied for and have been successfully awarded, but. I'm here to help even the small towns through the whole process. So it can get kind of tedious, but we're in the application cycle season. So if you're looking, wanting to. Apply, now's the time to, the How to Apply workshops will be held next month, and then we can get fall rolling.
Can you say where the one for Grand and San Juan is, or what? Eighty-seven?
Yes. Um.
Maybe while she's looking that up, I'll just say some of the previous projects that have been funded with CDPG is like. Um, up in Castle Valley, the place of pre-crossing was redone with all the flooding and everything else happening there. With CDPG dollars, the Moab.
The twenty part.
Yes. Was just recent. Uh, the Moab Rex, and I believe got an elevator added with CDPG. This was a few years ago, so that's back in nineteen ninety-two there. Um, so just, those are kind of some of the projects to think of, what you need element that we can have with.
And one was, that was just approved with the area. Grand County partnered with Moab Community Land Trust to do infrastructure development for a royal crossing. So they're getting that. Um, underway, but the two, so I'll host two How to Apply workshops. So one for Grand and San Juan. Last year I held it in Moab, so this year it'll be in. Monticello on October twenty first. It's a Tuesday at noon at the hideout.
And if you are interested, you have, someone has to attend that. To utilize the fund from your county or your, or the city. But it has to be, because you all have to kind of be the sponsor of whatever project goes through that.
So like Moab Community Land Trust, a nonprofit is eligible to apply, but they have to have an MOU with Grand County in order to do that.
So those, that, the one you're just talking about is, um. All, it's, it's infrastructure, like.
Yeah.
Focus totally.
We do have, so. There is some limited funding for planning, um, planning dollars for towns that need, just maybe the. Not, they're not shovel-ready, but they need a basic engineering plan done. But there is a certain cap that the state can award with planning dollars, the PG funds. So the state is capped at twenty percent. And the way, yeah, it's kind of just depending on how Serta's awarded with planning dollars for my position is considered planning, but. And then all the other agents, the seven AOGs, depending on what they're giving out as planning, will kind of determine the funds. For those projects.
And just as a note for everyone, CDPG, CDPG money is from HUD. And then the revolving credit thing that you mentioned is, um. Only brand-new businesses.
It can be startup, expansion, or retention. So. Even if they're, then they've been here for twenty years, and they're looking for some funding, and they're having a hard time getting it.
And what's the range of funding that comes? Like, how much?
Oh, two hundred fifty. Yeah.
Well, it started, you have a specific pot, so about four hundred thousand. How much do you have left?
There's about three hundred thousand dollars left.
And what's the timing on that? I mean, do you do it once a year?
It's revolve, it's like, I want to revolve the application. So if they contact me tomorrow, we can get started and hopefully get everything ready for. Um, approval in October. So I'm governed by the Revolving Loan Fund Board. It's thirteen members. Uh, kind of like the AOG Board made up of, we're a commissioner from each county, a mayor from each county, and then someone from. A banking background. We have a Regional Growth Association, um, member.
And all four.
Yeah, because what we're trying, I'm serving as President of the Chamber right now, and, um, we are trying to, um, really match. Companies, member companies and all companies, uh, with, um, things that really work for them. Like, it's very easy to just say. This program, this program, and people are like, ugh. You know, right? And so we're just trying to really learn, like, who is the best candidate, and that way we can. Be, be more proactive and match, find who's people that that kind of thing would work for. So, um, maybe we'll chat in with you. And just learn a little bit more about that because.
For sure.
Um. Like, what constitutes a new, like, you know. What are the definitions? So.
And remember, she was here twice a month. Yeah, she's happy to come to you, too.
When are you presenting at the Chamber Board? What did that just happen?
Hey. I just talked to a friend on the phone. We haven't.
Okay.
We haven't got any.
I do it in the works, so.
Yeah.
But the other thing is, with our RLF. Um. We can be pretty creative with, like, the terms and how we collateralize loans and things like that. Because that's what we are. We're trying to, like, we shouldn't be in competition against the bank or the private lender.
Right.
So we really try to be that gap financer, which then typically because of private lender won't loan on it, it's because of APRC, so we try to really find ways to overcome. AD and C hurdles.
Yeah.
And so we can be really creative with businesses on how.
Well, I think. Those are the details that if we really understand, we can convey them, because there's nothing worse than thinking, this could be great for me and spending much time, and then, and. Wasting your time, and then, oh, actually, we do need collateral, or, oh, actually.
Yeah, and then, yeah, yeah. Application is available on our website, and it's in-depth of everything that is required before your application will even be considered at the court.
Sure.
So will they need a business, a solid business plan, financial projection, taxes. A list of collateral, all run a credit report. Um, if you're leasing a building, we need to see the lease. Um, if you have a building and you're leasing it out, I need to see those agreements.
Yeah, and well, and that's all more kind of due diligence, right? But I think there's this, like, as a business owner, you're like, you hear about this program, you're like. Do not, is this going to fit for me? So the more we can sort of say, if you have this, this, and this, and this going on, this is worth it. And then all that, the due diligence and all the data that is there, but if there's going to be a deal breaker for someone, the sooner we can tell them about it, the better, and that way we can also find the people who do fit. So we're working on that, that to very front end, like, is this worth me reading this email, you know, that part of it. So we can talk more.
I mean, sure, yeah.
And it would be helpful to you, businesses, because they have a lot on their plates as well. Yeah. Yeah, it's just, yeah, to help divvy it up a little so that they're not reading all this stuff from halfway through that application and going, oh, well, actually, yeah.
Then am I right that there's the. Five hundred thousand, I think, is the number that came from Grand County. That's specific.
Four.
Four, sorry, thank you. Um. And then there's like an additional pop that's kind of like for the entire region as well.
Outside of that, and it's for Grand, it's for all.
Includes Grand County, right, among other companies as well.
Get that maxed out. So we really are, we're trying to. Figure out a way to gain more money. We're talking to USDA, SBA, and stuff like that to build, to grow that funding capacity.
Perfect. So yeah, so really like the local one is the one that's not totally tapped out yet at this point that we shouldn't be.
Two hundred and fifty, what do you have left in the big one?
The Grand County one has about two ninety-nine, and then my other two. Um, what is it, like, two eighty? The other one's at one ten.
And these are manual amounts. Yeah, well, they're costly.
Like, once a loan gets paid off, then it's back.
Oh, she's talking about it. So, I don't know, two or three years ago. Um. Federally, they allowed EDA to de-federalize these RLFs. So after seven years of running, and you're, you're in good standing, you, um, you could, our funds are de-federalized. So when she says there's two pots, so the larger pot is de-federalized now. So you have a lot more. We're even looking at kind of credit lines, because that's one of the big asks some of our businesses are wanting. And then the other one is, I can't remember how much that one was, but. It was under the COVID years, and so it's still not de-federalized. So it's under that, I think, like it is, so we have, it's a little more strict. Because it has those federal holds. So anyways, and then the Grand County.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, the applicant. It does not matter. It's just more different reporting on my end. So, yeah, super easy to work with. When we opened our store, the. MC's on the corner, I got a revolving loan fund, friends, guys, for a gap, because. Traditional loan.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to have twenty percent down.
Yeah.
I don't know, it was, time like five hundred thousand dollars. So I took money out of the one K loan for the damn my piece, and then they brought that other piece, so they was able to. You have to give them the exact same information. Are you giving a bank? And so, I mean, it's not like it's, to me, it was super easy. They were actually the easiest. So.
My hobby word. Claim for not easy. Is that how you know you're on the better way? Examples really helps, because when you have an example, you're like, oh, that fits my business, or, oh, that's not my business at all. And I think that's our biggest challenge, because our members just get. There's so many things that we're sending them, and it, and they, they, we just gotta, we're really working hard to figure out, like. Who things might apply to, so that we can really encourage them, because we definitely don't want to leave that Grand County money on the table. And so we need to figure out, like, who is qualified, so it's just kind of thinking that through, like.
And it's, and it's really all businesses. We've done everything from a. Hold like a coffee truck to a hot dog stand to a. A lot.
Right. Well, it's just like, sometimes if somebody needs, like, we just have to reach your process, and some people needed so much more money than we had, and it was almost silly for them to have applied. So we're just trying to. Get everything targeted so that we know, this is, you know. I mean, if somebody's looking for five hundred thousand. Quite, whatever.
Be a portion of it.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I, I think we can do a little better on this, and then we're going to be more efficient, and then we can.
And maybe we can help with this, you know, we're, yeah.
Yeah, pretty sure we need to.
Yeah, that's, I hope those walk-ins, and I can always do this in caller. I, they want a new person, I should come down and, then you chat with a person about it.
Uh, if we can figure out like the hurdles.
Hey, that's good. Yeah, so we do charge a non-refundable application fee. But usually Corinne does a really good job with, like. Making sure that that feature really can go to the board before taking that payment. So she does a really good job for doing all the link work for him.
Right, right, thank you. Settle these questions.
Great, one just touched quickly on LAA.
Oh, yes. Um, so the LAA is the Local Administrative, um, Local Administrative Advisor Program with ULCT, the Utah League of City and Town. Um, it's a program. For. Small towns that don't have a city manager to help with everyday tasks, and that is where I can come in to help. Um, with ordinances, um, answering questions, budgets, grants. Um, I might not have all the information, but I have a huge resource list of others throughout the state that can help. We can collaborate on how to. Come over these hurdles for.
We'll give you an example of LAA. So in McCal. Somebody went to my, or can you blink and you'll miss it. So they thought they were bankrupt. They didn't even know they had a PTF, and stuff like that. So we had an expert from ULCT come in, and they found the money, and they are not a bankrupt city. So it's things like that, but trying to help those smelt out.
There you go, Jasmine. Castle Valley will be rich.
Well, that's, and I saw Jasmine on there, so that's how much that, for that LAA program was talked about. We are holding on October.
September twenty ninth. On next Monday, we're doing an in-person budget training with ULCT. So Carrie from. That organization will come down, and she's doing a, a one-on, well, not a one-on-one, but just southeastern specific budget training for.
So if any of your cities or, or, uh. City council members want to come and learn more about the budget process, they can. Great. Is there anything, like, one of the areas where we've been looking at trying to do some work in, like, potential grant funding and stuff is Thompson Springs, which is unincorporated at this time, but you kind of like a small town, basically, like a very small. Municipality, although it's not a municipality, obviously. Is there anything, any support offered for that kind of a situation? Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jay. Any kind of ideas, like a talent that, that needs that kind of help? ULCT is full of the resources, and we can get that to you. And we do have like zoning and ordinance. We already have an expert on, so we can have in that area locally. But we can find that resource for anything you need. That's what we want. That's what the resource should be, will build that, that totality.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I don't know where it went, because I kind of lost track then. Bring my people to answer this, but. Like. If there's a project that, say, Thompson Springs needs, like, we'll work on it, like, I think it was about a year ago, maybe two years ago now. That Thompson Springs need, like, water master plan.
Yeah, that's still, like, water, water is still, like, the, the first hurdle to.
Business development and that sort of expansion. And I don't know where it fell with that, do some digging, but we were helping them do that, the CDP applications, so they do that in here. That's right. That's an example of how CDP can help. Yeah.
Okay.
For sure.
Why don't you do it in Orangeville? So Orangeville is having the same budget problem. And they're working with them right now currently, if you can try to help. That stuff out.
Yeah.
It's a lot of its budget. They, I think, I, you, part of the reason what's unique about our, about Serta. Is there can be retention there, because we don't, our board may regurgitate, you know, things, and, or new. You know, elected officials will come in, you know, that, but the knowledge stays with the agency. So that's what's unique about us, where. Sometimes when you have all these mean, I mean, some of these small towns, it's everyone. And so there's no retention of knowledge or historical value or anything like that. So if, that's part of the reason we're trying to. Have Serta have that knowledge, so we can help and be more consistent. So it's just not. You know, deer in a headlights when people are coming in, and they're just brand new to everything. So that's kind of the idea behind it as well. That's good.
Is there anything you guys could share with us about? I mean, you mentioned that you guys work with EDA, um. But it sounds like there's not a lot, yeah, you're the official development district, right, for, designated by the, for, for our region. Um. But you kind of mentioned there's not a lot of dollars there necessarily, um. But I, and I'm just, like, there are a lot of EDA programs that do have dollars, right? So like, what, how does that engagement work?
Doesn't necessarily mean, that's just the planning partnership that all these EDP. Districts, because everyone in the nation that has an EDP. Gets that, has an opportunity for that planning partnership. EDA itself has funding for things, and I don't know if they know what their funding looks like right now, but, so.
But that's, wouldn't necessarily sort of, like, run through you all to access that. That would be separately engaging EDA, or maybe with GOEO or something like that.
Well, GOEO, where is the EDP district? EDA will come to us and ask us if we approve it.
Okay.
They will. Every time. And sometimes we don't know anything about it, when we sit, because they know, EDA just want to make an investment. Where it's not going to be fruitful, it's not going to be helpful. So they, they vet it through us to help them make better decisions. So that's their idea.
So like, if we, if there were things that Grand County. Look found as possibilities that for engagement with EDA, would be like, we're going to do guys to create an application or whatever.
If you thought that out. I know you have a lot of experience, but we're happy to put that to.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, maybe while we're on the EDA topic, I just quickly. Well, maybe while we're on the E D A topic, I just quickly joined and shared my screen um, to talk a little bit more about that.
That'd be great. And then I just, just sort of, I call it out. Aaron then has his hand raised. So after you sort of start, we can get to his question.
Do you want to go to Aaron first?
Sure.
Aaron, are you, you want to ask a question on the previous topic?
Um, I just kind of wanted to make a comment here. Yeah, I'm, I'm on the, the Housing Task Force Board and. One of the biggest things that we've identified that we need here is a revolving loan fund. And it's just funny that the term Serta has come up several times with um. With like Caitlin Myers and Joette were both like uh, suggesting that we, you know, and that it was great, this was on the agenda. So, you know, I would like to, how, you know, I don't, not familiar with any of this process, but twist arms and see if. Uh, possibly if this is something we could pursue or, or whatnot. So that was just kind of my. Comment because we all know that housing is one of our identified priorities and um, just seems that uh, this guy's in alignment.
Yeah, and.
That mean, I creating a whole new revolving loan fund just for this purpose? Um, and we would manage it? Is that what he's asking?
I think, Aaron, you're asking if there are opportunities with the existing revolving loan fund to help support housing projects.
What we've found, I guess what I say revolving loan fund, uh, our biggest problem that we see is down payment assistance. That is over and over the number one problem.
Not business, right? I mean, you're talking individuals, not businesses.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. That's why I was kind of like, I just kind of find it funny that, you know, I was talking with Joette and she kept bringing this Serta program. Up and I was like, oh, okay, like, is this a potential avenue? Um, yeah, we just, uh, that was identified as our biggest stumbling block. Uh, for, for housing.
Yeah, and.
Unfortunately, no E D A getting by.
Yeah, with, with E D A, it won't, but, yeah, I mean, if, before we move on, sorry, I think I'm going to stop touching that. It's echoing and I can't turn off my volume. I have it turned down as low as I can on my iPad, but it won't turn off exactly. And then every time I move it, like. Yeah, so.
We can see it.
I know. It's making me sick. But like, we've worked with um. Caitlin and Joette on like the Royal Crossing stuff, where we, where we helped with was. Helping them apply for C D P G dollars, which then put in the infrastructure to the Royal Crossing housing development. And so that's kind of how maybe that, I need to be.
That's developers, not individual homeowners.
When it comes to a down payment system, like it tends to the state, it's a hot topic, but there are. So Laura Hansen, G O P B, I'm sure you guys all, I, I think you all know, but. They're working on this housing plan and we can bring this topic up about housing down payment and see if we can. And we also with our A O G board, we're working, so the governor's and has this build initiative. And we're working with our board and um, the project that they picked out was transportation. But we also can have a side, you know, some kind of sidebar that can be about that and dressing it. So we're, we're happy to bring that up and let's try to figure it out and see if we can create something that works for down payment. Go there.
And, and I do know that C D B G dollars to help with down payment assistance to individuals. I don't know if the state allows it. So the money comes from HUD to the state, then the state then allocates it to be treated.
Yeah.
And then the state has policy and procedures that we have to follow. And I don't know if that's eligible, but that's something we can.
Look at.
Look at, it's eligible under HUD. I don't know if the state allows it.
Well, and they might have passed, but they might be willing to do it now. So.
Yes, that, that, I was just gonna say, we'll research it.
You're the first group that's brought this up. So that's a great one to research. This is what we can do.
I mean, it sounds like it would be great to get Housing Task Force meeting, you know, at some point with folks here in the room so that you guys could explore that and a little bit more depth.
Are you okay if we investigate? I know.
Okay.
Certainly. Well, and um. I'll quickly share this about E D A since that's kind of the topic of event. We did bring Chris and he's our housing program manager and he can talk a little bit more about the C P G housing rehab program that we have. It's not, he'll get into details on that. But um, so with. E D A, so there are programs available, programs that uh, communities can then take advantage of like public works and. They call, we uh, I'm blanking on what it's, economic assistance and public works or something like that. And uh, then there's other things like Build Scale and all these other programs under E D A that we've uh, applied for in the past. But one of the main themes that we do as an E D D is we're in charge of creating what's called comprehensive economic development strategy. That's what I have shared. So it's a story map on G I S and the short link is, for anyone that wants this for in the future. It's a, it's bit dot L Y slash, all lowercase S C U E D D. Capitalize C E B S. So it's, it's um, a second, so lowercase S U E D D. Capital C E B S. And then it can take to this. So we're charged, the last time we wrote this was in September of twenty twenty-three. It's a five-year plan. Um, so we won't, well, we'll start conversations. Um, we're actually starting tomorrow at our next board meeting to start updating this for the next five years and twenty twenty-eight. We have when it's due. But we go through and kind of give like just a brief um. History of the region, kind of what's going on with our different industry clusters, um, so to speak. And then the biggest thing that I want to come down to. Um. This is just kind of background information, what's kind of going on in our region. We report on county data, kind of what things look like. So you can scroll through and see for county. Um, we do a SWOT analysis, but this is the biggest one. And then we set goals and strategies for the next five years. So. Um, these are our six goals. Their workforce, um, economic, or infrastructure. Economic diversification, energy sector, natural resources. Quality of life and then the last one is regional integration. And so.
Can I interject our second?
Yes.
So Chris, when you were asking about E D A, whatever you apply for, for E D A funds has to be in the sets. Yeah. So that's why it's important when we're doing this planning session for the next one that. You're telling our, the lady that this is what you would like to see because it has to be, we had to get funded.
And then, and that's why, that's why I've shown them the goals is because there's an actual question on the E D A application assessment. How does this project align with your regional sets? And so typically you'd go to our goals and say, this is the goal, this is the strategy, this is how it meets that goal of our region. And so um, as you're, this is why we ask when you are engaging E D A. That we're, we're involved, not because we want to do project or do any of that, like, we just want to support you, we want to be with you. But also like, so when we come to that question, we know how to answer it, we can help you craft a good answer. Um, and then also when E D A reached that plus, we'd say, yeah, this is, this is what we're having, this is how it integrates to all these different projects happening in the region. Um, and so that's the sets and then annually I do enough, we do an update. And so I just recently deleted this one. And it just switched over. And so this one is um, another bitly link. So it's B I T dot L Y slash. And it's all capital letters this year. So I learned the case sensitivity is confusing. So it's all capital letters, Serta twenty twenty-five sets. And so if you go to Bitly slash. Serta twenty twenty-five sets, it will take you to this story map. And then this is kind of the update. Same, I did, I just update the information in all the sections. Um, and then update the goals as, as we see, you know, as things progress, because the goals of twenty twenty-three are different than what they are even currently. And then also um, updating the data, county data, so that if, if someone is looking at this, they can quickly at a glance see what are our. You know, our regional assets, what, what do we have here? Um, our, our data, our county, our county data and then our action plans. So. I just wanted, while we were talking about the, um, you know, leave this so that it stops that. Bye.
Somebody has Carver County in there as, one of the county commissioners is attracting, they have an N D A and they're attracting a business. They didn't have a document that showed everything they were requesting. So they catered it, so that Carver County had something to give to that company, just an. AI.
Okay. Yeah, but that's all four counties.
Yeah, it does, but we did cater it. So that's why we changed it and updated it. So it's like, is this one company needed a.
So that, that's E D A in a nutshell. It's super helpful. And then um, if Chris wants to. I'm going to get back at Aaron's question on the C D P G housing.
Okay, so um, with, so, so the C D B G housing portion, I'm not the program manager of that, that, that was the, the aforementioned Louisa. She, she runs the, the single family rehabilitation program. Um, I'm familiar, I was the program manager and I, I assist her in uh, program delivery right now and doing some technical assistance and things like that. Um, but that, the funding of that program does come through C D P G. Um, it, it is intended for um, you know, that, that most critical um. Residents that need, that need help on renovations on their homes. So. We, we get a lot of disability uh, clients that need A D A bathrooms. Uh, repaired, you know, where hands put out in their house, um, walkway repair, um. And then uh, our number one, the repair that we, we normally do is, is roofing. Um, that funding fluctuates every year. So um, we, we don't always have. You know, the unlimited ability to repair everybody's home as we would like to. Uh, but it's, it's a great, a great resource to be able to help folks that need, need that help. They're usually in those susceptible. Income ranges that, that need um, need, need help with those types of things. Um.
Some of the challenges for granted same law in the past of the contractor. We now have one. So if you do know anybody that can utilize an American, we'd love to have some leads in this county that grow around.
So what does like eligibility look like? I mean, it's just like income eligibility limits, I see.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's eight, it's up to eighty percent, L M I.
Uh, and yeah, you're right. Sorry.
So was that?
It's eighty percent A M I.
Okay.
It's, it's HUD, it, it basically runs off of the HUD requirements. That, that, that's the scale that kind of, you know. governs it all anyway. It's, it's easy to follow. Uh, and, and with that, those, those change every year. So that it's not, you know, as we could progress through the year, things can change as far as eligibility and things like that. So. You don't ever want to count yourself out. Just put in an application and figure out if you're, it's worth it.
And so it's, it's, yeah, it would just be individuals that apply. So any eligible individual based on those ranges would apply directly through your route to access that.
Um, no.
But weatherization, I'm working.
Yeah, so, so. But along with that, there's also our, so we have those C D B G funds. That, that pay for the majority of that program, but we also have a, a loan program through the Only Walker Fund. That, that does the same type of thing, but we can do, we can do a small interest loan. And, and usually that's in addition to C D B G funds to be able to help push that even further. I don't know if you guys have seen what a quote on a, on a roof is right now, but they're usually over twenty thousand dollars. So you can, you can quickly approach what our limit is every year. So if we're able to, you know, have that extended loan to, to finish up projects and make sure that we're. Taking care of the whole entire home, then that, that helps. The, the, the goal around the program itself is to, to make homes safe and sanitary. And so that kind of gives you an idea of, of what we're doing. We're not going in remodeling and upgrading a home. It's, it's critical repair. So. Uh, you know, fixing problems that, that somebody cannot deal with. So, so that changes yearly, but right now we have up to fifty thousand dollars per project. Um, every year we re, reassess that based on our funding that comes in and we try to. You know, spread that love out and get people's houses worked on. Uh, but we have flexibility in that also. That doesn't. That's not the end all be all. Sometimes we can make an exception if we need to. So uh, it, it's a great program. Uh, and if, if you want to apply, you can go to our website. Uh, the applications on there for the single family rehabilitation. Um, and then I'll just. Lead into, so, so one of the great things about that program is, is that it also, we use it, we utilize it to, to. Um, bolster our effectiveness in our weatherization program also. Uh, weatherization is an energy efficiency program that is funded by D O E. Uh, we also receive state funds from light, the lighting program. And it, and that, that, uh, in that we work closely with the heat program. All of this is, is low income. Um, and the purpose of it again is to, to, to make more homes more efficient. And, and do repairs to homes to make it so that their utility bills are lower so that they can afford to live in their homes. Um, as Jerry had said earlier, um, that is, this, this program is allowable for um, rentals. Um, which makes it very diverse because, you know, there usually aren't a whole lot of park or programs that will assist somebody that's living in. Income house, income housing. So it works out really well for, for those folks to be able to come in. Um, we, you know, we can do things like, you know, we're, we're really looking at energy efficiency, doing insulation, air sealing. Um, you know, repairs on homes that, that, that let air in and out of the house. We're also doing, looking at uh, the equipment that's in the house, the furnace, the water heaters. Um, and making sure that equipment is running safe and efficient. Um, we, as we go in and do inspections and do upgrades to the homes, we're constantly testing that. To make sure that the equipment is running like it should so that we don't end up, you know, with clients getting sick or injured or even worse, getting killed. So. You know, it, and our program is, is very, uh, has been very successful because. We've gone into homes and been able to identify situations for, for families that, you know, finding those, those hazardous. Um, situations with like backdrafting water heaters and things like that. So. It, it's, it's a really nice, nice thing to be able to go in and know that you're really helping people. Um, not only income wise, but, but their safety, their, their living conditions. Um.
Of course.
It's so much, yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, go ahead.
Curious if you're able to work with like Rocky Mountain Power to identify homes that. Like their energy, like I get an energy efficiency report emailed to me every month.
Yeah.
Are you able to work with Rocky Mountain Power to identify like, okay, this home seems like their energy efficiency is. Through the roof in comparison, in comparison to a similar structure.
So, so our, the, the program is, is, it, there, there's a position in the program called an energy auditor. The energy auditor is a, is a certified uh, position. You have, you actually have to go through classes and. Go through quite a bit of testing to, to be certified through the Building Principles Institute. Um, along with that, when, when we do what we call intake, when we get an application, we, we start working on approval for them. Um, the energy auditor is, is looking at their utility bills. We pull.
First and then.
Yeah.
And actually Rocky Mountain Power. It's a little money.
They do, yeah.
So they're, they're partnered well and it's funding and they're the auditing for that energy.
They, and you're really rocking power, just like here's a list of homes to go do because it's, you know, they're inefficient, but.
Yeah, and, and we work with Enbridge Gas also. They, 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 they actually give us funding um, just to help us. In situations where we go into a home and maybe they don't necessarily qualify in the way that the rest of the weatherization program. Qualifies for certain measures as well, we call them the upgrades. Um, so if, if somebody doesn't qualify for that measure, but they're an Enbridge user. We can still go in and, and replace a water heater if it's producing high C O. So we are kind of, have, have been able to be an extension to some of the utility programs. Out there and, and be able to do that and get a lot of support. But a, a, again, it, it really does, you know, we're, we're looking at that kind of thing, looking at utility bills and trying to work with them as much as possible. Um. Any, anything else somewhere?
Nothing.
Okay. Uh, um, and, and just. Uh um and and just just with that, so so the weather is a little bit, again, uniqueness with it. We're able to to extend that program, so CDBG allows. For us to do carbon emery uh grand and then portions of San Juan, Monticello, Blanding, and I believe also. But it doesn't allow us to reach into the into the reservation because the chapter houses received their own funding. Um weatherization's a little bit different because we can reach all the way, so we go all the way to four corners. Um we go all the way back through Arizona and back up to Navajo Mountain. That's our region and and so we we get to cover everywhere, and so our outreach is is a little bit bigger. Um and obviously, that's a high focal point because there's a lot of, our waiting list is. Fifty percent of San Juan, like it is a huge content of it is from San Juan County and the reservation. That being said, our our Grand County is our smallest, isn't it? Yeah, and and we would love, you know, we love to engage with with Grand County. Uh the guys love coming through your town and being able to, you know, be partake of the city and. And they love finding the restaurants to eat at, things like that, but. Again, again, you know, us being able to come here, you're there, the need is here, we know it is. And so just figuring out where that engagement to to bolster that waiting list would be great.
Since like, I mean, do you guys engage with local nonprofits to?
Yeah.
Because I feel like that's probably the best vehicle to get the word out of, to eligible families.
We do a little bit, um I mean, there's there's always, you know, improvement that could be made in that.
Yeah.
But realize that I I'm talking about four guys, so.
Sure, it's not cute.
We're we're a small group in a large area of Utah, so we're doing everything we can.
But we don't want Grand County to get left behind.
No, absolutely. No, no, yeah, absolutely. And and it is, it is, we're always looking for opportunities. Um you know, we've 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 talked to lots of folks down here and and they, you know, we have um. We've gotten assistance for.
No, we just might, maybe we can help make some, get some of those connections at all.
That'd be great, yeah.
Well, and did Cory Cory from the city, did they? Do something in the um Walnut Lane trailers through this program? Cause I know they had to do quite a bit of work to those trailers.
Apparently it has been, yeah, it's been a long while since we've engaged in the improvements of that project, as far as we're talking CIB in particular.
But wouldn't it work with that program?
Program.
Because that that program, I think, would be up your alley for that one.
Ye- yes, it would be, um I think reaching back, it was to when we were through the council discussing if there's going to be a city. Managed and developed project or a public private partnership, which took it out of the realm of qualifications is my understanding. Uh we can speak to that as well, it's kind of the the, yeah. Exiting the jurisdictional authority, that's where I think it it did drop off, but so that's what I'm thinking way back to twenty nineteen. Is what engagements we had, and I can't recall specifically.
I just remember there was a lot of money spent on those trailers. Anyway, okay.
Those, yeah, that was, that funding was not, that was through the city's fund through our Waho system. So that was our our earmarked affordable housing funds that went into that development.
That's the one where the.
The city bought the park.
Yeah, you know, the state got involved in that, oh, yeah, they reached out to us, but we couldn't do anything. So the state got involved and I believe there was something that they worked out and helped, but Joette reached out to us and we tried to help, but our funding. It was, it was, it was just too much. Since.
Any final questions for team while we're got in here, you guys have done an amazing job, we really appreciate all of the inspiration. Yeah, I know we're at time.
Yeah.
Uh. What was it, bring Julie?
Oh, please, sorry.
Yeah, I apologize.
So um one of the. You know, I'm community serve, community engagement, community services, anyway. So some of those programs that I manage are the two banks, Carbon Emery, Breeder Brand, um. The heat program to provide the utility assistance, the program. Um that provides services to like seeing people home, house that are in shelter right now. And then also TANF temporary assistance for needy families that provides rental assistance and mortgage assistance for lonely families that are. Either currently homeless trying to get housed or are um maybe going to get evicted because of a situation, so. With that, um. Just, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, that's that, sorry, um. No, Jerry said in the food banks, yes, so so all of those programs are low income, the highest is about two hundred percent. Of the federal poverty guidelines and that, the TANF and right now, CSPG for banks, so. And our food banks, we'll kind of start with that, are, we receive funding from community service block grant. It's very, very small amount of funding, it's about a hundred and thirty five to a hundred and forty thousand a year. And that's for the four food banks that we run, and that's, you know, for staff, travel, space costs, all of that. Um out of all of the grants that I personally manage, CSPG has the most requirements, I mean, there's so much to it, you have to have a board and other things, but. Every three years, we are required to do a community's, I mean, a community needs assessment, which we just submitted. And that identifies the prioritized needs within the region. And of course, talking about housing, that was the top prioritized need because. Um especially if you broke it down by county, you would see that, especially in Grand County. If people are asking for affordable and accessible housing, it's housing cost right, I think. And the second prioritized need was jobs that pay self sufficient wages that have benefits and. In discussion with individuals from Grand, it's like it's hard because I can't find employment, you know, that pays. Wages, living wages or has benefits, a lot of seasonal positions. And then the third was, and it's it rose quite a bit from the previous three years, was food access, food insecurity. Um so just to talk about all of our programs, the number of individuals seeking services has increased, that's all around the board. And we really see that too in our food banks, we see so many people coming first time that haven't been. And a lot of the stories are similar, you know, I'm struggling, my. Prices are gonna, my rent's gonna, food's gonna, utilities, everything, and they're just struggling to make it. So our food banks, um we do have an amazing relationship with Utah Food Bank that we get. A bulk of our food from, we also get great donations from our community, which we're always asking for more because we need more and more to support the growing need, because. It is just astronomical. And then you have challenges as well, um. We get a lot of our food is USDA food and. That was, that program was cut over a billion dollars this year, and that provides a lot of our proteins in our food banks, whether that's. Peanut butter, meats, canned meats, beans, things like that, that's a big challenge as well. So we're always asking, you know, can you help support them, you know, donations or give your time, you know, come and. Volunteer, it's really important to kind of help keep that.
Thank you, I'm a volunteer for our county, it's really good about supporting.
Yeah. I volunteer. Awesome, name of you, thank you. Um so with that, I'm just kind of wrapping it, because I know we've taken a lot of time, but. We always want to just make sure that, you know, Grand, all of our counties know of the services and how we can better. You know, I get the word out there and and also provide services to whole Grand County, and so. You can reach out, you know, to us at any time, we will help direct individuals or they have questions, maybe. They don't know if they qualify or they need this help or they have to space it, we're all the time, we'll be happy to help.
And even if you haven't ever heard of the program, just to wrap up.
Yeah.
Please reach out, maybe we can help be creative and figure it out, so we're happy to be. We live in that creative world, let's try to figure it out on a limited budget, we're happy to help.
Yeah, I think that's a big part of it, because people don't want to ask for, they don't want to put this on forward for these loans or they did a lot of this stuff. And so the more that we can push out, like if you if blah, 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 you qualify, you know. And then if you look at that, go, oh, I don't qualify, or this person doesn't qualify. But it's just more, more that we can push out, because people are hesitant to count to you, but if we, that's what we're trying to do with the chambers, like. Get to the businesses, yeah, so we can keep working with y'all.
If there's a way to make it more attractive for your members, please let us know, we're happy to try to figure that out.
Yeah. They read, they have exactly seven seconds to read an email, so that's why we're trying to like, you know, boil it down, get their attention, is is they're the right candidate for it.
And that's what we want, we want your guidance, we want your input, we want to do better, so let us, help us, yeah, we think we're happy to be, that's our part. We can be a team member that just makes it easier for your citizens, we're happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
So thank you so much for letting us come today and talk about some of these programs, we're very grateful for the opportunity.
And this isn't all, there's still more too.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we're like, we're the economic development board, but I think it's also just great to have community engagement, because so many of us have multiple hats that we wear and ways that we can just like, oh, I think that you guys, we should, I should go tell this person. Runs a nonprofit about the weatherization program, the housing program, that doesn't really have to do with our board right here, but just as community members, we can try to like, make this stuff work better for our community.
And just to throw in one piece really quick too, I mentioned that because we receive community service block grant funding, we do have to have a board, a tripartite board. Which there are twelve members and four are elected officials, one from each county, then we have private, one from each county, then we have low income, one from each county. Low income can either be someone who is actually low income that wants to serve on the board, or it can be someone. Like from a nonprofit or that serves low income individuals. We do have to do a democratic selection policy with that, just through our bylaws. And what that is, we have a couple of people who are interested, we just have a short bio about it, we put it out, some of our community service programs and people vote. And I have been, I am down a board member, a low income sector board member in Grand County, and I've been looking for about three months and. Talked to some people and they just said they maybe didn't have the time or it wasn't. And just to give you a piece of that too, we share a lot of information at these board meetings, but we only have to meet quarterly, so it's not a huge time seek, it's ninety minutes every three months, you know. And occasional email on like.
It's it's not our rules, it's federal rules.
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Of course, I may have to do all these dances, so.
So if you do know of anyone that maybe work with a nonprofit that might be interested or even a low income individual, please, you know. Reach out because I would really like to get that, I need to get it filled, but I would really like to also get it filled, to have that, you know, representation, so.
Great. Do our best.
Thank you.
Thank you so much too.
No, yes, yeah, we really appreciate your time, you guys taking the trip to come down here and talk to us, and yeah, I mean, I think we'll be working with everybody.
Here, no, no, we're only in, so I'm, you know, two cameras, so.
Fantastic. Well, we'll see you again tomorrow.
If you have a strong desire to come see us. Do you want us to hang around?
You don't need to, you're you're more than welcome to, I mean, you're welcome to stay, our meeting is totally open and you're, stay as long as you'd like, but you don't, you don't.
Thank you so much, take care, thank you so much.
Let's do that, just remember, um, okay, sorry, Melissa, we're a little bit behind schedule, but I'll turn to you next, if you're ready.
Awesome, yeah.
Date from that, the office.
Quick updates on our COG and the postings of the board. Uh Macult. So first of all, I can't say enough positive about them and how they have worked really hard to be able to get things pushed through as quickly as they could ahead of schedule. I think that on the one hand, they're moving as fast as they can, and then on the other hand, there are unforeseen events that may or may not have come to bear on that process. That have added to that in between those two things, it was going to be really, really difficult to get to the completion of that contract, if not impossible. So the route that we decided to go is that they have. Switched things up and have reported on how they've been able to spend those funds to date. And then they have been able to line up in the original contract between Grand County and the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. How those changes in spend are still impactful in terms of what they had originally obligated to when we signed that agreement. And now Deborah has all of that information and she's meeting with James Dixon next week. And then he will look at where we are, what they've been able to complete, how that compares with the existing contract. And then he'll make a decision about whether or not we can change the contract. If he believes that we can change the terms of the agreement, then they'll modify the contract between Grand County and GOEO. And we'll sign that new amended contract, and then Macult will still have to go through the closing process with GOEO, still apply for the remainder ten percent. And they'll notify us, so if we're able to move forward with uh Grand County EMS, it's going to be a really, really tight timeline. I had a great call with uh Andy and McKay and Jen today with Grand County EMS. And we're ready to go, so they've got the information that they need to have. Until Deborah meets with James, we're not going to waste time in going any deeper with a grant application, because if they're unwilling or can't modify the contract between Grand County and GOEO. It doesn't matter, it's just a waste of time, but if they are able to modify that and that is a possibility, then probably what we would do. They start working on that grant application and run them concurrently, knowing we still may have to throw all that work away, but at least there was.
Those are possible.
A possible outcome, yeah, exactly, so. I'll keep the group updated, but again, just same status report, all hands on deck and we're moving as quickly as we can, so.
Thank you so much for the work, and Deborah, thank you also for supporting us on this, it's like, we know it's tricky, and we really, I just. Love that everybody's trying so hard to make it happen and let us know if there's anything else that that needs to be done or that we can do to to support you guys in that process, because that's, I know it's. Tough and you guys are doing everything possible to make it happen.
It's, you know, I, it's a lot of work and it's a lot of hoops, but if we're not able to make it work this year, it won't be because there was anything that we could have done, like we. Yeah, we're pushing, so there's that, and then the board, uh Chris had also asked me to speak to the board postings and where we are with the board. So Dana is amazing and she's ahead of everyone, she actually had the board postings done while we were in our last meeting, so those have been posted. Um we're going to do a couple of things that are no cost to kind of publicize, there are a ton of board openings, I guess I won't say a ton, but. Is is a very exaggerated number, but there's more than one handful.
Sure.
Of board positions that are currently available across the county, so we're going to start pushing those. But in the meeting, the leadership meeting on October second. Dana's going to let leadership teams know that if they can clean up their board numbers and what applications are open and what they need to fill. Then at that point, the county will do some paid advertising.
Okay, so that's beginning of October is when.
October second is when.
That decisions will be, are sort of started at.
Yeah, and board board applications for different boards come in every day.
Yeah.
So they're posted, people know that they're available, it's just that without a lot of advertising, so one thing that uh Dana encouraged, which I think is really smart and I encourage as well. Word of mouth, let people know if you have your own social media accounts or you've got an audience or make sure that you're sharing that as well. And right now, probably word of mouth and being able to share those things are the best way, yeah, you, but you've got a really great voice and a mailing list and. So you've got a great voice, yeah, the chamber. Say that again.
It is.
You mentioned a social media post about it.
Oh, I don't, it hasn't gone to social media, it's posted on.
Yeah, yeah, and then it can send you all of those links right after we get out of this meeting, it can send this group those links. Um there are a lot of great instructions, it tells people what board positions are available, obviously this board has some self-interest. You're more interested in promoting probably this board than just boards in general, so. You know, however you want to message that, but then after that leadership meeting, uh there will be some ads that go out, not specific to this board necessarily.
But to all of them.
But to all.
Yeah, so the timeline, I mean, I know it's not set in stone until October, but it's probably like. These advertisements would run sometime in the first two to three weeks of October, does that sound right?
As early as possible, depending on the deadlines, so what our thinking was, was Times Independent, Moem Sun and Moep Happenings. And they all have different kind of publication schedules and whatever, so working with their schedule just as quickly as we can get them out after that October second meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Anything else?
No, we're going forward.
Well, just like flowing straight from that, we basically asked, I asked Melissa and the team sort of like, what's. How do the application deadlines and the timeline for um interviews and things like that get set? how do the application deadlines and the timeline for um interviews and things like that get set? Because our goal is to have applicants to have something sent to the commission in terms of recommendations for filling these three, what will be three positions, right? Currently it's just one, but will be three by the end of the year. Before the end of the year. So that we don't have a period next, the beginning of next year where we're, you know, in a limbo space, basically. So the, and the answer that I received was that we should set those, the deadline. An application deadline, look at considering our meeting schedule and so that we can then have interviews at our meeting. And then get something to the commission. Uh, and I haven't like.
We don't have a December meeting, correct?
We have, uh, I mean, like sort of technically, there is a December meeting. I think historically, uh like it it's the last Wednesday of the month, right? So that's clearly going to be over the holiday time period. So I think we either need to cancel that or move it to a different time so that it doesn't run straight over the holidays so that people can attend it. Um, and that's probably a part of this conversation too, that it's kind of like, how do we line all this stuff up so that we get our jobs done?
Because if we don't, we don't advertise for or until October and then we get the applicants, we'd have to for sure interview in the in November and then send the recommendation.
Totally.
So November is your timeline, isn't it? Am I missing something?
I don't know. I don't think so. Yeah, I haven't like sat down to look at calendars yet, so we're doing this all together right now.
Yeah.
Um.
So yeah, I think, I mean, if they advertise for a month, if they start advertising the first of October and advertise, I mean, you could all advertise all the way up till I mean, our meeting would be, and this would be maybe the day before Thanksgiving.
Oh, fantastic.
Would we do that? Or would we have move it?
I think you should move that.
I wish we reached in with that meeting.
I think in the past, we've moved the the November meeting to the week before Thanksgiving. And then we've had the December meeting.
The week before Christmas.
Like around the twelve or somewhere.
Probably not the week before Christmas, but during the second or depending on where Christmas falls, the third week of December.
Yeah, the third week December is the week before Christmas. So seventeenth is Wednesday and then the twenty-fourth Christmas Eve is the next Wednesday.
Right.
So if you did a week before, because most people aren't going to be gone.
Both months, just the week, the week.
The week before.
Wednesday.
We could just though try to make it happen prior to December.
But if you did it for November nineteenth, then if you had like your cutoff, the like the twelfth of November, that would be a week before the meeting. That would be time to compile them and send out invites to the meeting or whatever.
Yeah. But yeah, we just need to inform the applicants.
Yeah.
But I mean, we we interview all applicants, so we just need to inform the applicants that this is the time for interviews.
Yeah.
As long as a week feels like a reasonable amount of notice to give applicants, then that's fine.
And then depending on how many applicants you have, I mean, we've moved to the RC G grant super fast. You guys, you know how long you had if you decided at that meeting or if you marinated on it.
Yeah, right, exactly. Like you mean whether we make a decision at the same meeting?
Yeah.
I mean, that's always been something that's been a discussion among board members is like, so you invite everybody in, you interview them. And then do you want to immediately go from interviews while everyone's in the room to deliberation? Our deliberations, obviously, open public meetings, like they happen in public, but it's one thing for them to happen in public after the fact, and it's another for them to happen in public right after you've done the interviews. I don't have a position on this. I'm just saying that.
There's a reason I think that that might be important to do is if we, if we wait until December, like let's say that I I guess that it gives more time for somebody else to apply and then are we going to do that again in December?
If we set a deadline, I think we should stick to the deadline. I mean, in the past, some things like that have happened where we felt like, yeah, what do we do when we have an applicant, even though they came up at the deadline? And I think it's gone different directions based on the circumstances, but my own position on that is you set an application deadline for terms and then their application would be valid. It would just be for future openings at that point if somebody applied later. But I hear your, I I hear that as an issue for sure.
Or we make it to where they can do it in December. I just am
Yeah.
trying to
Yeah.
make it make sense.
I don't know. I mean, what do other people think? Like I mean, it really just depends on.
Because if we get that, then we don't really necessarily need to even have a meeting in December. If it's.
Unless we have other business that might.
Yeah.
We should meet in December just because we should, but I think it does, we just have to make it earlier. Uh, I don't think that's so hard to go Wednesday that we could do it for. Um, I I think so. What's on the table right now is advertise now, try to get the candidates in by the November meeting, which will be the week before Thanksgiving. And then we can make decisions first or second week in December, like have a meeting even if it's shorter meeting or whatever. And that way, I mean, it's a goal, last year definitely everyone was off the back and we were like bringing around people in March or whatever. It was hard, right? And so maybe if we could, it seems like it would be possible um to get, it it just, is it even on television? No. Like, we have time between now and then.
It's like it is.
I know. Um, Monday was so long for me. I thought it was already Wednesday by five o'clock on Monday. But um, anyway, if we um, if we um get applicants, start advertising for applicants now, get them to our November meeting. And then have a December meeting where we discuss them. I think it is kind of strange to discuss them immediately while they're all sitting in the room.
I like that timeline.
And that way we can sort of learn a little bit more and sometimes people don't present that well, but then you learn later and have all this great experience or whatever. So um, that's what I would recommend. And if that doesn't make you crazy, Chris.
And I think the last couple of years, we had people coming and going at different times of the year, people cycling off, people moving in different, and so um, you know, I think this is the year to really get firm on the date. Application date, set the meeting. I like the idea of a November, November interviews, decisions in December. And that gives people who come on the board some time to meet with whoever the chair is or other people sort of get oriented to the board, how it works, what its focuses and the like, because some people have just walked in as I did without any orientation, no onboarding. It's like I had to figure out what was going on.
Yeah.
Um, and some people who came on the board had actually attended a couple of meetings before, I think, Chris, you did. Um, and so I think make this much more structured.
Yeah. So we, so if we did though, say December, move the decision-making part to December and we're talking about a meeting, maybe the seventeenth. Would that be too late in terms of getting things to the commission? That's my layer.
No, because the commission was getting them. I mean, they get them all the time too. I don't, so that meeting.
So when would we get that you all in front of you all if we did it?
The commission meeting would be um, so if you gave it to them on the seventh, yeah, our next commission meeting there would be, we have the sixteenth, so it would be the sixth of December, uh January. So January sixth, we would.
So we would become official.
Which is plenty of times by your next meeting, January twenty eighth.
Right. I think that'd be great.
Okay.
Is that right?
Um, okay, so what I'm hearing sort of recommended is a November meeting on the nineteenth. Is that sounding correct?
Yeah.
I think the, I think the nineteenth is the Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Yeah, nineteen and then the seventeenth is December.
Seventeen, yeah, okay. So changing meetings to eleven nineteen and twelve seventeen. Melissa, do you see any problems with these those dates as of now in a way?
As of now.
Okay.
We know that part usually needs to plan around.
And then the date that Melody threw out for an application deadline is the twelfth, November twelfth, one week ahead of that. Or, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. Just one week ahead of that meeting. Um, yeah, meetings, interview scheduled in November. And then decisions made on that December seventeenth meeting and recommendations sent to the commission. Perfect. Does somebody want to make that as a motion? I mean, I can do it if it's just too complicated.
News that we have our November meeting on November nineteen, nineteenth, and we have our December meeting on seventeenth of December. When is school out? Sorry. It must not be out that weekend. It must be.
Yeah, it is. They get up at the end, that that week, the end of that week.
End of that week.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to carry on. December seventeenth is the um, meeting. Or is the December meeting to December seventeenth with the goal of interviewing candidates on the November meeting and choosing upon your board members at the seventeenth.
Okay.
And the cutoff for the applications will be November twelfth.
So, right.
Let's get it.
Randy, okay, seconded by Randy. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
On high.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. It might have been the previous one.
Did you send out any email for this board this week?
No.
No, he just had a base.
Sorry, that's part of, yeah. I tried to, I tried to do that. I'm glad you all made it. Yeah, I did. I did talk to just about everyone, though.
About it. And you did talk to everyone since the last meeting, so you're you're still a lot of everybody that's here.
And Chris, I know you're getting a lot of advice about being a new dad, but Deborah has had a young baby about a year ago.
I know.
And she may have some guidance and counsel for you.
And and future playdates in the world. Um, cool. All right, we got that order of business taken.
Let's definitely start working on scheduling playdates because we're so good at.
I think that was it. So the other thing I just want to tee up is the RCG and RCOG process update revision. We've had some conversations already. Um, I think that we don't have time in today's schedule to like take that on, but basically I just want to convey that thing. Melissa explained to me that it would be useful, like no matter what we want to do, whether it's sort of like a similar process to last year or a complete overhaul. She'd like us to vote on it and sort of set, you know, make a statement of what our board wants to do with that process. So I think that 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 will be a topic for probably next month's, yeah, meeting, that we'll try to really like make some headway and have a motion um with, you know, whether like, whether that ends up being a motion that says we want to do something similar last year's process with these little tweaks to it. Or if we wanted to do something bigger than that. Um, so yeah, that's kind of just a heads up for for where we're headed with that. Um, okay.
Isn't there one more thing?
Yes, there is. Yeah, 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 yeah. That's what I was getting ready for here. Um, so for the last agenda item, I'd like to put something up on the, to share something on the screen. So give me one second.
Ready, go.
I was like, what's going on? Um, this is our bylaws to start. And so this is part of the conversation about where we head in terms of this sort of like discussions we had about strategy. Um, the advisory role of our body, of our board, et cetera. And so I wanted to start with just kind of like what our bylaws say about this. And it's pretty right front and center, right? The board exists to strengthen further economic opportunity. Workforce development, business services across Grand County. The board advises the Economic Development Department and Grand County Commission on issues pertaining to economic opportunity, including economic development, economic diversification and economic inclusion. And then it gets more specific. And it talks about some of the ways that that might happen as well as the ways that the board works with the RCG and RCOG grants, which we know according to state statute and our bylaws is a fundamental role of this board. But I thought it was worth putting it up there because clearly, as a board named Economic Opportunity Advisory Board, we have clear responsibilities to offer advice um, related to economic opportunity, economic strategy, economic development. How we do that, you know, it doesn't say, there are some things that it says, like ways that it can be done, but it's not like there's a lot of flexibility with what exactly that might look like. And I would just say, that is, I mean, as I've said already, I have had a lot of checked in, sort of with and had conversations with a lot of you all over the last month to gauge, you know, sort of take a temperature where we're at, what we want to be doing in that sense. And I guess to me, like some of the little takeaways from those conversations that I've had are that our board members join this board in order to fulfill that mission, right? In order to serve the interests of economic development and economic opportunity in Grand County to further them. That's why we're all here. That's why we all volunteer our time is because we care enough about our county and our community to want there to be economic development and economic opportunity for people that live here. Um, and so we want to fulfill that part of our mission. Um, when it comes to the general plan, I did not hear a lot of people saying like, this is like a hill I want to die on. Like, we need to update the general plan. Like how that looks in terms of that advisory function, those advisory responsibilities being fulfilled is not something I heard, this sort of being like, it has to be this specific way. Um, and so had some conversations and trying to think of like, what is the appropriate way to do it? I mean, I think as we've stated before, we've we've heard pretty clearly that there's a problem in terms of both maybe capacity and appetite for a general plan update. And so what I would say, and and sort of based on the conversations we've had is, well, let's not do one thing, right? Like if that's not, that's that's not the only path we can head down to fulfill those responsibilities. Nobody that I heard said this is something that we absolutely need to do. Well, then let's pivot and do it in a way that's, that works better for everyone. Um. What that looks like is something that we can consider. And I have uh some uh proposal. It's very simple, but I want to put it up on the screen so y'all can look at the the language and then we can decide if it's something we'd like to adopt. So give me one second again, sorry.
Sitting here just kind of puddled up.
Yeah. Seventy-two in here, but it feels cold. It just, when it comes on, it's supposed to air vent. Just when it comes on, we just need to figure out where to sit. It's, I freeze and then I'm hot and then I freeze and then I'm hot.
Yeah.
Um, is that legible? Can you guys read that? Trying to, let me, all right, let me try to get.
I can send.
I can. All right, so the gist of it is that we would create a set of principles and priorities for economic development. It would be used along with other sources of input and alignment with Grand County stretch, blah, 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 to help guide our decision-making on the twenty twenty-six RCG and RCOG process. So that's one use of it, right? So this is what we've talked about before is like, when we are looking at applications or even just designing the process, what are we trying to achieve? What's the articulation of that? So this, these principles of economic development could help us do that. It wouldn't be the only thing, but it would help us do that. And additionally, they would get shared with the commission and the county staff, right? Not asked to be adopted by, but shared with them. And so I mean, I guess to me, it's like the question that we would be trying to answer here is what type of economic development should be prioritized in Grand County? And it could be, I should say, what types of economic development should be prioritized in our community?
Can you pull up the um, general plan? Because I think it has it. That's what I am so confused by on this, why we're trying to do. I I get that we want more direction as far as like what to chat about, but I guess what I'm trying to understand is why do we have to motion something when it's already in motion?
And I I would argue too, I I kind of agree that it is not, I do not think it's about picking winners and losers at all in terms of picking what they, what we should focus on, because even I've worked in communities where they focus on getting light manufacturing and they can't do it. It's like a, it's like a two, like picking those kind of, it's it's in a vacuum. Here's where I think, I mean, I haven't read this whole thing yet because you just.
It, I mean, it makes sense, but.
But but here's what we have that they, that the commission needs. We have on-the-ground business experience of what we're seeing in the economy and what's happening with our businesses and our marketplaces and the things that we work on. And what we can be for this commission and for all elected officials, it's like the basic argument for lobbying. The reason that you go talk to elected officials and their staffs is to give The reason that you go talk to elected officials and their staffs is to give them information about what's happening out there in the world so that they can make better decisions. So I think we've had this whole like, should we try to update the plan? There's so much pushback on that. I do not think we, I don't care about that. I mean, I think the plan should be updated, but it's not worth dying over, like you said. So instead, what if, I feel like it's not about choosing, it's about giving them info. Like, for example, about all the different communities that are committing, competing with us, the, the trends are happening. Things that are happening um, in different industries, especially in tourism and outdoor recreation. Right now, the Department of Interior has a gateway community executive order that is focused on improving the economies of gateway communities. I'm not sure our commission has heard about that yet.
Yeah, it was on the web in our part too, but.
Oh, good. Okay. That's so great.
Yeah. That's what's going on.
That's great. I mean, I've been working on it for a couple of months, right? And so it, it's definitely like, so i- if you heard from, from this committee, hey, we think this is important. You've got a million things, right? So if you heard from this committee, this, this is an important, I'm not sure that's a best example, but whatever. This is an important thing that, that we think our community can benefit from or that we need to work on, whatever it is. I think that that would be more information for you. Like, I feel like the opportunity is to do, um, not so much pick anything as it is to provide information. I guess that's what I mean.
Well, and that's kind of what.
How do you think that goes from this group to the commission? I mean, we only let our, we only let our directors have a 10 minute, once a year conversation with us. You know, as far as the update on what's going on in the department. So I mean, I don't know how, I don't know that.
Well, you could decide. I mean, uh, the, the, our commission, our commission liaison could say the economic development board did, like, we talked a little bit about a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. If we, if we started working on that, it doesn't have to be this super formal thing, but if we came up with a document and in that document, it says there's a threat that hasn't come up in any of your work on the commission. And they were like, wow, that is something our commissioners should be aware of. I don't have a great example off the top of my head, but like, I just, uh, we don't, it, they don't have, we don't have to present it and they don't have to approve it. But it would be a way for if you come from this meeting and say, there's concern about X. You know, this is how it started with the housing. People kept saying there's housing problems and it creeps up till the point that it gets to the agenda of the elected officials. Now, so I, I just think we should, sources of input is the key, is the thing. Like we are a source of input and so. Uh, so I guess I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Principles and priorities. I think it can be just input. That's, I guess that's what I would say.
Other folks.
Yeah.
Around the room, if you guys want to. I also have some more comments to make.
I really like the idea of the principles to help guide us next year on the, um, the, and through the grant process. Um, I think we're sort of all over the board. Last year, we, we, we didn't have principles, right? That sort of guide us and we, if we can create those, I think it'd be really beneficial for next year.
Yeah. I mean, last year we tried to tie it back to Trail to Tomorrow as like
Right.
way to do it, but this would be something that's more like what this board, the direction that we, based on all that stuff, right? Based on general plan, based on that, but where we're trying to take things where we think that there are opportunities.
So I'm sorry, I'm so much better with examples than I am with all this silliness. Um, so like, let me give you an example. If we set a principle or a priority of economic development is getting a better airport in this area because we think that's going to be something that's going to drive more tourism or, or kind of go on the back of what we're looking for. Let's just say it, for example. Then we can then try to advise the county based on the research that this group's going to do, or, or we're going to say, oh no, this RCOG and this, um, um, these grants that we are in charge of, that's who we want to apply for these grants. Anybody can apply, but we're really looking for this specific principle to be met.
Yeah, I think the airport is like, maybe, I think principles would be at like a 30,000 foot level. And when you start talking about specifics at the airport, it's a, it's a big enough economic asset that maybe we would want to put it in there. But maybe it's like one level down also in terms of how specific we're being. Yeah, like transportation infrastructure or something like that. But yeah, it would help us guide, it's, it would help us guide decisions. It's a way to say, and it's not going to be just one, right? I mean, it's going to be principles. So you know, things like entrepreneurship, right? I mean, I think that's something we've all had, we've all named already that we want to support entrepreneurs in Grand County. Right? Transportation infrastructure might be one for sure. Um, I mean, I think things like at the, I'm just trying to describe sort of the level that we'd be thinking about. I think a tough one for us to make a decision about is whether economic diversification should be a principle, like where we believe there's the most opportunity for economic development. I mean, I remember reading back over like Aaron's, uh, commentaries that he sent to us. And when he called out some things, and I think he used like the word, or the term business infill as a way to describe like where are the areas that we have weaknesses in the services provided within Grand County? So areas like the trades and construction, um, Corey's called out over time, like, you know, just sort of like basic business services, like clothing stores that serve our residents, things like that. Those would be sort of like, that could be the level of a principle. So I think that, I mean, to me, that's the like level that we're talking about. And yes, I think that it would, I don't think that when we say airport, that means that we're going to go and become the airport experts. Like we already have a board that does work on that. We're just saying from an economic development perspective, this is really important. And so we really support any county actions to do. If, if the, as, as commissioners, we're advising you to consider significantly work in this direction. Um, and then to me, it's, it's a little bigger than just that too, because it is about offering advice to, for our responsibilities to the commission and to staff. But I also think this is an opportunity to have important community conversations, to engage beyond just those two audiences. This is not something that I would like put on here or say is something like a part of our official work, but I'd like to write an op ed about one or two of these principles and send it to the paper. And I'd really invite anyone else on this board to do something similar, like pick one or two of these that are especially important to you and engage the community with why this matters. I think that's, this is the way that policy does get driven forward is by engaging multiple constituencies at a time on these issues. I mean, I go back again and again to housing and the progress that's been made on a huge issue in Grand County in terms of affordable housing. And to me, the way it got done is by having lots of different sets of actors working in the same direction. This is us from our little perch, which is economic development, talking about these various issues, which transportation infrastructure would be a great example of one. So I think there, there can be lots of reasons why this type of an exercise can be helpful.
I really, I think I mentioned this when Chris and I met. We had to keep our voices down so we didn't wake up Oliver. But the, um, this is a lesson I learned at the museum, as we were preparing to do the uranium exhibit. Um, I kept going back to what was happening in Moab in the mid eighties. When the mines had pretty much stopped employing anybody. The mill was operating, but beginning to, um, start reducing output. And the, um, the state, uh, I guess Rural Development Organization and the USDA funded a position, a, a rural economist, he may have been an ag econ guy, uh, to come and take a look at what's going on here and try to figure out, you know, how the state could help Moab go through this radical, uh, transformation. And so he came in and, uh, wrote a detailed report. I'm sure the county has a copy of it, but I haven't been able to locate it. Um, and I know that the author who is still alive had already disposed of his own copy, but the outcome of his report was basically to listen to the voices that are saying build on events that bring people in to the community. A lot of people that is for a short period of time and do that multiple times throughout the year, you're going to minimize the impact on the local community and maximize the potential for, um, supporting local businesses. And he actually, the TI actually printed his report in installments over the course of about six months. And of course it was a smaller community at the time, the TI probably had more influence in terms of reaching people then than it does now. Because we're just a different and more diverse community. And so I, for me, thinking about how that worked then, the idea of tackling some of these principles and priorities and putting them in the, whatever media we want to use to prompt questions and to, to identify opportunities that are in the community, um, that we can really focus on. And they could be written. If the board wanted to, we could be, we could, um, write them on behalf of the board. We could write them individually as members of the board. Um, and they could be everything from the outdoor recreation, adjacent business infill opportunities. To the relationship between local businesses and the schools. There are lots of different ways that we can use the perspectives that we've had, the conversations that we've had and all the stuff we've learned through Trilled Tomorrow and Moab Tomorrow together. And start helping to influence people, providing information to people, prompting some questions in an op ed kind of approach that I think can help more people understand what this group does and why it's working.
That's awesome.
You know?
And Deborah.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to go first, Deborah? We can't hear you.
Oh, she's on mute. I can see her.
Yeah, I'm mute, Deborah. There you go.
Nope, you went on mute again.
Okay, there we go. My buttons weren't clicking. Sorry about that. I was, I was just going to offer, you know, other bits of information and advice, um, to maybe give other perspectives or from my office perspectives, right? Um, you know, Goio has like clearly defined, um, categories for the RCG and the RCOG. Um, you know, they're on our website. We live by them. Business recruitment, development, expansion, workforce training and development, infrastructure, industrial building development and capital facilities improvements for business development. Those are the main categories of what these funds are to be used for. So I suggest that you, if you do do a principles, you know, action, really focus on those because that's what the grant is specifically designed for. In addition, we also have our targeted industries that the state, um, focuses on. We just recently added energy to that. Um, so those are specific industries that the state is prioritizing funding to go towards. So those are just some other thoughts that you can think of, um, when you're really trying to focus on, um, your principles. I'm not sure if that aligns with what you're going for. And then the other thing is, you know, we make sure that the board is so diverse with so many different folks from so many different sectors. Because you are the experts, you do know what's going on, you do know what projects are going to make the biggest impact in your community. And so what I like to see on some of my boards is, you know, you all bring forth projects, right? The RCOG is project based. Um, the RCG, yes, you are mostly, um, you have mostly focused on distributing that in forms of sub grants, but you know, I suggest that you guys bring forward projects that you're passionate about or that are available in the community or happening in the community or that you want to see, you know, say, hey, I am really passionate about aviation and I think that we should spend $50,000 at the airport on this project and bring it home or bring it home, bring it to the board and then have that discussion, right? As a board and kind of discuss all of your projects. Just some thoughts of how it's done, um, in other counties. And you know, I would also say the economic development is very fluid and like, um, Forrest kind of mentioned that, you know, it shifts, obviously, you know? I think year to year, based on natural disasters or pandemics, you know, so many things change. So maybe also consider that, you know, it's just not so structured and rigid, rigid because it could change from season to season as we've seen recently. That's all I have. Thanks for listening. Good job, team.
Thanks, Deborah.
So maybe the words, the word that threw me off was set, create a set, like that we are going to vote and we're going to exclude the airport and, oh, because we didn't, the airport didn't get them voted, so we're not going to include the airport. Like, I, I feel like if we're not going to make an attempt to update the general plan, then then we, if, if our real value is more of a brainstorming board and we can say this, this board shall explore principles and priorities for economic development. That would give diverse voices on the board the opportunity to say, hey, I think XYZ is important. I think it's really important that we have, um, these marked OHV trails. So I'm killing myself to get that done. But anyway, so, and, and that's because I believe that that off-road industry is part of Moab's heritage. And I think it's something that our, we can't be on the wrong side. I see that as a major pain point in our, in our community right now. And so other people might be feel different about it, but if we don't have to vote, if we don't have to say, this is our set of principles. If we throw the principles on the table, some might sort of evaporate. They just won't get gravity. That won't make sense. Mel might feel like that's not worth talking to. That's not a big problem. But in that group of commerce, of, of ideas that we all throw on the table, there might be something really important that maybe Goio hasn't identified yet.
Well, and I think that's coming with the AI thing. That's why I like mining, extraction, power, um, energy is a giant one. And I think there's going to be bunches of money that's coming soon for all of that, which I know that that's a, you know, an eyebrow raiser in general, but the point is, is we've got, if, if we get too specific, we're going to have to change this anyway.
Well, well, that's why I agree in some ways with you on that.
Well, the, well, I, um, was meeting with the BLM today about multiple use. We have 800 oil wells in Green County. We have, and there are lithium possibilities. And there, so it's not about picking winners and losers. I don't want to pick winners and losers. What I want to do is say, how can we optimize all of these things?
I guess that's why I'm trying to understand why we're trying to write anything because we already have it written for us.
But I, I think, well, I think there are some outdated pieces to that document, but forget it. What, what we, what this board can do on an annual basis with the new members and each year, if you did some kind of exercise, it, 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 you could do it as a SWOT thing, or you could do it as principles and priorities. But I think the key point is we don't have to set them. We don't have to vote and go through some big process of like everyone, the airport's less important than the whatever, you know? I, I think it's more important that we're creative. I mean, one of the problems that nobody's talking about right now, that is the biggest threat to the Moab economy is, is our competition. We are seeing communities all over the place working to take a piece of our market share. Nobody's talking about it. We're not doing anything really to, 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 I mean, we're, the chairman's trying, but shoring up these, these activities like OHV to make sure that we don't lose that group of visitors is really important. So I don't think it's so much, I think the words are create a set. I think if we said, this board shall explore principles and priorities and discuss them and use the ones that get, you know, general agreement that, you know, if one person cares about unicycles or I don't know, pick something weird. And, and when we come to, um, do the grants, there was a unicycle person, you could say, okay, we'd like, you know, I don't know, it'll shake out. It would be a, the, the principles and priorities could exist. I just don't think we have to do a formal thing to say, these are our principles because the state's already done that. We should be more creative in the conversation.
So but, but aren't the states' priorities, that is to say, the targeted industries clearly delineated? Those are criteria to which you match your RCG and your RCOG proposals.
Well, they keep saying we get to customize it.
But, but we know where the, we know where the evaluation is focused on. If it's, and if it's not just the targeted industries, it says other three criteria, workforce development, capital, et cetera. But I think this, and, and we will work with those because that's really the genesis of, of this organization, this board. But surrounding that are lots of the community development activities that have an economic impact, have a cultural impact in the community. And if you just say, instead of calling this a set, just say, let's create or explore principles and priorities for economic development. That's almost more of a street
Side with.
More of a strategic or a, a vision of what can be done in this community.
Sure. And a heads up, like if things come. Sure. And a heads up, like, if things come up in this board, but they don't make, they don't fit with the state's model today. Who knows? Maybe next year, that thing will have risen to a higher level. Who, who knows? I just think we should be.
So I, I, I think that, like, your, your comment makes some, some sense to me, and I see a bit of a challenge with it, but not one that's not impossible to overcome. I mean. I think that, yeah, not being able to represent the diversity of views on this board makes sense, right? We, we have diverse views and there's no need to, like, just make something disappear because you can't get complete consensus. About a certain principle or priority or something like that. So I, that makes a lot of sense to me. I do think that working towards something, and it's gonna have to be obviously like a living document, something that could be updated or changed over time. It can't, it's not gonna be set in stone for X number of years or something like that. Uh, but having something that you could share. Right? Would be good, right? Just having a discussion among board members doesn't do a good job, in my view, of doing the advisory role. Sure. The board does. We need to be able to share it with others in order to offer advice, right? So, but that doesn't have to, but that can include what you're saying, I think. It can include this exploration. It can include something, doesn't have to.
Down, we just don't prioritize it so much, like we don't, we don't rank on both of the brain.
I, I think that.
So that way we can be creative and maybe some of it'll be like, yeah, that utter balloon. Whatever, you know, but other things could, could be prescient, like we could be for, for. Predicting what the next kind of needs could be. And I also think the really important thing about the state is that this. That every county's different and every county has different strengths and weaknesses, and if we just follow the state, we could be missing some of our own strengths.
Well, those are the state's priorities, right? And then the, the question then becomes, what are Grant County's priorities, right? And then when you're applying for grants, the question becomes, which ones of those align?
Right.
Right? I mean, but if we don't have a statement or an idea of what our priorities are locally, then we're just gonna fall back on only using the state's ones, right? And so this, the question is, how do we have something that comes that's top down? We're gonna go bottom up, and then you find the spot, that sweet spot, we meet in the middle, and that's where you actually put an application.
Yeah, it's just input. It's not saying anyone has to vote or decide on this, but you might notice it and it could become an important way, who knows? And the, the, I mean, every liaison to all of these committees makes a decision about what was important, then I need to report to the commission and what isn't. And that's fine, that's.
To be honest with you.
Yeah, like, but if it was a big deal, if it was something like.
I mean, I can talk to all of them individually, but I think like, you know, when I, now our reports are written. Now, I mean, you know, I report with reports, I mean, I write them, but I just am like, I, I just, that's my thing, like, I, I can take back what I can take back, right? I can use the information, but when you wanna advise the entire commission or our economic development department, that's where I think that it gets tricky. I really think that you need to use those guidelines for the R C G and R C O G. Threats, you know, like what is the priority, and, and those can be, those can be presented to the commission, they're like, you guys are up in the night or not. Or like, those are sounding fantastic.
Yeah.
You know, like last year, like they don't really even know what, I mean, I couldn't have told you what their priorities are. This year, I might have a little bit better idea. I might not be the least, not for this board next year. Who knows? I hope so. I really like this. Um, you know, so I mean, things are always changing, you know, and so we just, ever so, I think that, and just like. These states' priorities might change, but if you can take the state's priorities and then make them more specialized to Grant County, you know. How does this, this piece fit into our, our county? Like, I, for example, don't like. Just creating jobs. I mean, to me, creating jobs doesn't work for us because we don't have houses for people to like, boom, new people in here. So, you know, I, I would say that that would be like, not one of our criteria is creating jobs, but, you know.
It's too broad.
Yeah, but like, but like, having the um. Bringing in a workforce that are more talented, you know, that have a higher level of talent or specialized or things like that, you know. I- in specific fields, you know, that would be maybe part of that. With that plan, but, and I think a plan is fine. I, I'm not against a plan at all. I think changing the general plan, yes, I, I was like, I don't know that's gonna happen, but. Um, as far as what this board thinks the priorities are, especially for those, I mean, you really only meet twelve times a year. You have board, you know, there's other business that gets happened, I think is a big thing to undertake, and I don't know that you will find consensus in this.
Well, I think it's, yeah, which is smart, uh, this comment that we don't necessarily have to drive to it to do something useful. I mean, I, I do just like, I do just come back to though that our bylaws. Our bylaws are very clear that one of our responsibilities is to advise, and so. I'm super flexible about what that looks like, how we go about doing it, but it's like our legal mandate. So, it's like half of our legal mandate is to do this advising.
Write a letter to the commission, or what are you proposing on that whole thought process with it?
That we put on paper, whether we use the word create or explore, something like that. You know, some representation of the discussions that we have on these priorities, and it can include, like, I mean, I think it's a good idea to say like. Several board members support this as a priority or something like that, right? But it's just, you put it on paper, it's a couple pages. And, yeah, you send it up to the commission. You send it over to Melissa. That's like, just within our advisory capacity. It's up to them what they do with it. Or nothing, if they do nothing with it. But we can then do more with it than just send it to, it's not, I mean, it doesn't have to end there. Right? It can also go to paper, it can also turn into op eds, it can also advise, you know, inform the way we do the rest of our responsibilities, right? So we'll use it, we send it off to the other folks who we're supposed to be advising, and then we can try to do more with it to engage the community as well, if we choose to. I mean, that's, that's what I'm doing.
Communities that are succeeding have a strong open dialogue. And, and are able to communicate some new ideas and work together to optimize. That's, that's what, when you got, the communities that are like, ooh, you know, you see projects die because they can't really process them. But if we had the opportunity to send a letter to our commission that says, here are some areas that we think are important of concern. You'd be like, commissioners have different interests. There might be a commissioner that's like, yeah, I've been worried about that too. And they might wanna pick up the ball and do something with it or not, but at least we did our job of bringing this diverse group of people together. Pulling some ideas together, not killing ourselves, cuz we don't have time to prioritize them, but just throwing them in. Like, if somebody comes with some completely wacky idea, we say, nope, everyone's like, hmm, I don't really love it, but you put it on the list. Anyway, who knows? We don't have to have a big, like, we have so much brain damage going on in those grants in terms of prioritizing and judging everything. That it seems like this could be a little more um open process, but achieve the same goals. I mean. This is, elected officials need to hear from the public, and we are one of the conduits from the public. And that seems like that's what that says in the bylaws is be the conduit, like, tell, clue them up, tell them what's going on.
I guess that's why I don't understand why she's not the one that just goes to the commission to do that, or whatever commissioners.
We can give it to Melody and she can.
I, I don't.
However, she'd like to.
Yeah.
I mean, that's where I, I think that's what we're saying is like, you don't need to push.
Why are we even writing it? What is this a, is this gonna be added to the bylaws or what is this?
I think I just answered that.
No, I'm not trying to be rude either. I, we're what now, just executing.
The bylaws says advise the commission. We don't really have a mechanism for doing that. What Chris is proposing is, we agree that we write something, that we put something together, that we don't just do the grants. Or something with something.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion, and this is the language, the first sentence on the potential motion language. And the last sentence on the potential motion language. I don't think we need to get involved with the R, I don't think addressing the R C G and the R C O G are important. Because we already have guidelines for those, and we know that the programs, the, what you said earlier. State priorities are priorities, where they intersect, those become the two grants. Um, so, the language would be, I move that this board shall create, shall. Explore or create principles and priorities for economic development in Grant County. What we're gonna do, they will be presented to the Grand County Commission, Commission Administrator's Office, Economic Development Office. In support of our responsibilities. That's my motion.
You have a second for Forrest's motion?
I'll second it.
Randy seconds it. Okay, so we have now open it to discussion on that motion that's on the table, which is the first sentence there. I think I heard switch create, swap create out for explore and the last sentence there.
I think you used both words, didn't you?
There was a reaction to the word set.
Yeah.
So, explore or create principles.
We could just take out the word, the, a set.
Yeah.
So create principles.
Yes.
Yeah, so it could be however many.
So I amended my.
Okay, no, we, I think we've got it though. I think so, okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to articulate the motion that you're putting forward, so it's whatever Forrest says, you seconded.
Well, the main thing is we, we can create as many as we want, like, and if there's one person who wants it and nobody else wants it, it can still get thrown in. Yeah. Cuz who knows, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna judge them, we're gonna, we're gonna gather principles and priorities. And that way, we're communicating what we're hearing the community needs or what we see is needed. And then we're doing our job of advising because we're, you know, collecting, it's like, yeah. And, and we're supporting our elected officials by giving them information. That's all we're doing.
Yeah. And then to your question about, okay, wh- where does that go? Well. Melody and her role has a feedback function to the pollution, her observations and whatever decisions we make. The decisions, most of the decisions we make, if not all of them, are about the two grant programs. And those get, not only does she communicate those, she also, we also present them and they act on our recommendations. We still have other areas where we see opportunities in this community. To improve the economic health and community well-being. And a lot of those other areas are connected in ways indirect, if not direct, to growing the economy. And to the priorities of the county. So I don't know that, I, I think we have the communication. Methods already.
That's why I don't understand, but we can write whatever we need to. I just, I mean, I believe in you. I think you're gonna go to those people. And you're gonna say, this is what we think. So that's where I'm super confused on, well, you need a specific little thing, fine, if it makes everybody feel good, let's do it.
Well, I have no worries about our economy, and I have some, I see some things that are happening out there that, that we should be worried.
And I do believe that that can come from the Chamber of Commerce for sure.
Well, sure.
And I think this Economic Development Advisory Board is great, but we have heard here, so that's why I'm like, why aren't we utilizing that? If we don't feel like it, it's fine though, if this makes everybody feel good, let's do it.
Let me do it. It, we're just writing down, and, and that's all we're doing, is writing down. We're giving our chance, th- th- instead of our agenda being, you know. Totally about the grants and totally about when our meetings are gonna be and logistics, you know. We get to actually talk about the substance of what's going on great in our economy, what's going on badly. Like, I would really like to have some substantive conversations about how our economy is doing, what different people are seeing and feeling and.
Totally.
Because that is how you keep it healthy is by learning, ooh. I mean, we wouldn't be in this place with the O H B community if we had those conversations five years ago and not letting it get as bad as it got. There's just.
So, we're at five.
Right, let's do it.
So, let's, yeah, put this to a vote. Uh, we've got the motion on the table as articulated by Forrest, seconded by Randy. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, let me see, Aaron, do I, we have a vote from you? Aye, okay, aye from Aaron, and Jasmine may have had to jump off, I don't know.
She looks like it. I don't know, she tech, she did jump off, but I don't know if she registered a vote.
Yeah, she just said I have to jump off about twenty minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so she had to go. Uh, anyone opposed? So, abstention?
No, I, I.
Oh, you, you did, okay, okay, great. So we have a unanimous vote on it. Thank you all.
I'm so excited.
Oh, I were excited. It's the same thing that we've been doing. That's why I was confused.
We spent a whole lot of time talking about a bunch of individual businesses.
So, the meeting is adjourned. We can continue the conversation.
No, I have to go, I have a volleyball match. Thank you.
We're seeing the volleyball tournament over the weekend.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, where was it?
It was the middle school tournament.
Okay, okay.
Yes.